...a position to wear a mask, but it's entirely with the individual. But when you're speaking, please remove your mask to those people whose hearing is not as good as possible. There's no fire alarm expected, so if the bell goes off, it's real. In the event of an alarm, please exit round by the brown rear door to assemble in front of the Friday and house town park interest. So I'm there. Try to access by the rear doors and beyond the stairwell on the right. Please ensure that mobile phones are either turned off or switched to silent mode. Technically, please advise that this meeting is being recorded. So if anyone has a problem with that, let us know and we can position you where you can listen. Any problems? Good. Right. First item of business. Members are asked to elect a Chair of the Councillors. We need a nominee. Each nomination must be seconded. Do I have any nominations?
May I nominate councillor Doug Lawson to be the Chair of the Council?
Yes, do I have a second of that?
Yes.
Sorry.
Several?
Yes. Do I have any other nominations for Chair? Oh, go, go, go. Right. Well, just to vote for yourself, have a big, all in favour of councillor Lawson? Right.
Expect paper seats.
I'm councillor Lawson. As a Chair. If they have your seat, then I shall go and relocate.
Before you go, Charlie. First of all, thank you everybody for voting for me, but also thank you, Charlie, for all of your service over the last couple of years. There's a badge for you there.
That's right. Thank you.
And I present to you with your ceremony. My Lawson James will be your next to come and congratulate Mr Lawson, please. For those of you that don't know, these were given to us from Eden District Council and they are the old urban council. It's quite special.
Those of you that knew, it might be worth having a look at it, actually, it's got some interesting stamps around the little, little bits of chat. Not on the way. Okay, so we're on item two, which is appointment of the Vice Chair. Members are asked to vote for the appointment of Vice Chair of the Council. Do we have any nominations?
I nominate councillor Mark Waterfall.
Okay, do you have a second there? Okay, council vote. Are there any other nominations? Okay, show of hands, then, all those in favour of councillor Rudden?
And could we pass councillor Rudden with all his medals for himself and his consort? And our honourable councillor, please. You need to take a seat on the chat table as well, thank you very much.
Okay, so item three is acceptance of office. Members are asked to note that the Town Park has now received completed declaration of acceptance of office forms for each member.
I apologize, Mr Chair, we have not signed a declaration of office for yourself and for councillor Rudden. Can we just go back and do that before we get to the agenda? So that's for councillor Rudden, that's for yourself.
So okay, so item four on your agenda is the general power of competence. We're asked to confirm by resolution, members are asked to know that the Town Park, no, we've got that. Members are asked to confirm that the council may continue to exercise the general power of competence as the council meets the eligibility criteria. I'd like to propose that the adoption of this power is continued. Could I have a second of this? Thank you councillor Jackson. All those in favour? Next item is apologies.
No apologies for House.
Item number six is interests. Members are asked to know that they are required to submit their completed register of interests within 28 days of the election. I haven't done mine yet, I think it's probably number one or something. So just get those in as quick as you can. Item seven?
Next one.
Item seven is a declaration of interest and requests for dispensations for this evening's meeting. Members are asked to disclose their interests in matters to be discussed on the agenda. Do you have any?
I would like to.
Councillor Lawson?
The declaration, my god, declaration of, name of address on the floor. Declaration of interest for your legal proteins planning application, a register of interests.
So, yeah, dispensation. Item number eighteen, council, village hall, and the board members.
Don't need to, I don't think so, there aren't declarations.
Okay, that's fine. Councillor Snell?
I'd like to read this out, if it's okay, because I don't want to miss anything.
Okay.
So I want to be clear that as a member of the public, we can make statements about choosing for the meeting. However, as a councillor, if appropriate, we must declare our interests and/or predetermination and withdraw from the whole of the discussion and not vote for that item. I welcome the opportunity to clarify my input on planning matters at this meeting, especially as it's being held. It is important that the wider public are aware that if we run for joint campaigns on particular issues, we are predetermined, highly biased, and cannot participate in a discussion of issues if it comes to the council as an agenda item. If we do participate in these circumstances, those involved in making our application can seek to have the discussion invalidated. I understand that there could even be a call for a rendition of you. It was also the emphasis that we are constrained by material planning considerations. We can't refuse planning or oppose every planning application from a particular company just because we dislike a particular aspect of the business. Over the course of the election and before, I and others were the subject of abuse and scotering of incorrect information. Councillors on planning will be able to confirm that I have been rigorous in considering planning applications, including Oega, and have on several occasions, in particular, raised the issues of retrospective planning and have objected to any plan which there were material considerations to do so. I will continue to exercise this rigour and I am thankful to have got the opportunity to clarify this matter. As part of my election campaign, it was stated, we, because I put out an input with another member, a candidate, we have and will continue to do, all within our power, to challenge those with the responsibility to do much better. No community should have to accept environmental intrusions. We are currently working on establishing a multi-agency group with representation from residents to monitor and respond to issues of environmental nuisance. This is a wholly true and accurate statement, which I know others in the council are aware of.
Any others?
Yes.
Councillor Jackson?
I'd like to make a declaration of interest with regard to the proteins of my council.
I don't know if it's broken, but I am actually a friendly. There's nothing discussed today, but.
No, it's not.
I'd like to make a declaration again on the same agenda, it's 20 proteins because of our similar statements as councillor Snell on my campaign.
No, I don't, this is, this is, this is just about registrable interests, I don't, I don't want to have a discussion about it now.
Thank you.
Has that covered everybody's registrable interests?
Yes.
So the next item is to, for members to know that there are no items to be considered in private, so we don't need to have any Part Two business today. The next item after that is, members are asked to approve the minutes of the last meeting of council. I'm authorised to sign the minutes, the full council minutes, from the 27th of March 2023 and the year-end minutes for the planning committee, Monday the 16th of March 2023 and Monday the 24th of April 2023, for the five hours meeting. Is everybody happy for me to sign that? Show of hands.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, outside bodies. Are there any outside bodies that members would like to put forward as an outside body on the list?
We've got a long list in front of you. I think we've captured a fair number of them, some of which we have taken up since our meeting. There have been proposals for new groups, did councillor Snell had a proposal for a new group?
Yes, it's been in existence for quite a long time, it's Health Watch Cumbria. And it's something that's about ensuring that the patient heard, but voice is heard and residents' voices are heard about health issues across the forum that I currently sit on. Covers, covers car life and.
How frequently do they meet? Is it in person?
It's, 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 it can be hybrid.
Okay.
They meet once every two months.
For five months?
Yes. Sometimes they have joined once with the West, but it's all of North Cumbria.
Any others?
I wonder if we might consider the Recovery College, which is a matter of, it's part of an organisation which is starting to get quite rotten, which is coming, that's Cumbria. And they now have activities at Ewri, and I wanted to, so they're quite, and anybody can attend those meetings online. Being a piece of, I would have to be more than that.
Excellent.
Any others?
Rural Services Network, I stood on there. Maybe some somewhere in minutes, oh, sorry, notes, I can't remember where it was, but we had a free trial for one year.
Yeah, we're going to talk about that shortly, but did you want to carry on?
I will, yes.
Okay, well, go on to that in a moment.
Because I've got a meeting on the twins.
Not wanting to preempt that, but.
No, I can basically back out.
Can I also check if the Salvation Army's here?
Yeah, you don't generally have representation on church or central theatre, but we have a first-line relationship.
Coming out of call scripts. Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
On outside bodies, can we later on?
Oh, yeah, if, if, yeah. Yes. Yes, absolutely.
A sixty-six.
Yeah, that's off, that's, we didn't like it, that's just.
Sorry? Oh, sorry, it's still far, still far up the top, I didn't.
Our members have been down to add to all this, Health Watch, Cumbria, Recovery College, and Cold Springs Steering Group. Are those members who suggested they can talk to me about representation and how we contact the groups during this week, that would be helpful. Do we want to?
Do we need nominations for the other?
And we'll need nominations for those three as well, and there are also, well, we have some votes. Yeah, that's the next one, too. Oh, okay.
So I apologise in advance, this is quite a long list. We need to nominate two members for the 106 partnership. Does anyone have any nominations?
So this is community bus transport. It's about ensuring that communities that are rural have access to whatever other type of. We fund their services, which every year it's a useful bridge to part on if no member wants to remember. I'm happy to put myself forward. Councillor Burghain?
Yes, I am a regular bus user, as most people will know, and the 106 does happen to go through Emon Bridge.
Yeah.
Which is pretty self in half, because I'm on the right-hand side going out, but if anybody, yeah, if anybody's required.
I can, councillor Burghain? I can, councillor Teney?
The A sixty-six community liaison group makes calls in here, we need two members tonight.
What is, what is that? That's a big, a big job, and we have to do all the A sixty-six and ten minutes. Of course, that, oh, what, that's a good company, thank you. Round the mouth, yeah. I had a meeting with A sixty-six, but are you nominating yourself?
Yeah.
Yes.
Councillor Shepherd's been on it previously, we do expect that we need figurative meetings in light increase when the work comes closer to its due date, so just be mindful that there might come a bit of a delay.
I believe we will end up in link, I'm trying to explain why it's hesitant.
So I'm happy for just one member, if anybody else would like to put themselves forward or perhaps one member in the sub.
Do we need one? Do we need two? It's a big job.
Just for consistency, yeah. Thank you.
I appreciate having someone, I may be trying to.
Is that West London Furness Council?
Yeah.
West London Furness Council Association of Local Councils?
This was Eden Association of Local Councils, but I'm assuming they're going to have another group. I'm not quite sure what they're going to call it, I think they are splitting it over into two new industries. So they meet, course it by not seeing what's going on. It's generally hybrid and it's an opportunity to network with other councils in the area. And generally, there are themed meetings that, so for example, if I have representatives from my sponsor for this September, there might be, we might talk about highways, and that meeting, we might talk about traffic harming. It's a great opportunity to network, meet other clubs, the other councillors. Councillor Snell's been on it. I don't think, basically, it's open to any councillors, we've had more than one. Yeah, lovely. Anybody else? That's okay. Yeah, it's actually open to any councillor, but it'd be nice to have the. Thank you.
The next one is Eden Health and Wellness Forum.
Councillor Snell's our pastor, is still on it, do you want to continue to?
I, I need to, because I'm actually involved in some working groups that have come out of that, so it'd be really helpful if I could.
I think you'd be perfect.
Local cycling and walking infrastructure plan, Elsie Whither.
I'd like to do that, please. Thank you. Yes. I'm not sure if the frequency, um, um, or whether they've done some work very recently, but we'll keep you posted.
Mark, you're moving the study, please give us.
Oh, so that's. Oh, we have, yeah, we've got some stuff for that. That's. Yeah, that goes.
Who've you got, sorry?
I've got councillor Holden, councillor Jackson, and councillor Shepherd.
Borderlands.
Hands going up again, oh. Well, we could have three in a sub. If that works at Borderlands, if it was, yeah, that'd be useful. If you put your hands up high, please.
We do need at least one person who's been on it, don't we?
Yeah. There's only one letter that's on it. So we've got three. Thank you very much, members.
Act and reflection, please transition.
And I might, I have ten decorations, you can believe it, that you happen to be that. Ron, can you describe Pat as a team?
Very briefly.
Dan.
Turn this to a sustainable future. So free.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Head of the Refugee Network?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes. I'm, I'm on the, I am on the steering group.
We have, do we want to be okay to table one person? Queuing up.
I was going to put myself forward, but we've got enough, so that's.
Are you sure?
Yes, I'm fine.
Rural Market Town Group members?
Councillor Donald's got a meeting that day on Wednesday.
Is that, is that the same thing?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 that's it.
Ah. I thought you went.
So actually, South and Councillor Donald.
Okay. Town Working Group. We've already got Deputy Town Park and the Economic Development Council on the line, but we do have a member as well.
No. No, you come in, you come in the next one. Members, members of any other purposes in the group.
Yeah, Town Working Group, some groups, offices and members on any of them.
So we'll do that as a long line, that, okay?
Yes. Zero Carbon Cumbria Partnership, Town Park is a member of that.
Yeah, and Councillor Jason, so it's.
We're going to have to work out what to do now.
Do you lose your salties? Or have, what is new, free one, these three, new ones? So Health Watch Cumbria, Councillor Snell, are you happy to represent the council on that?
One.
If you can send me cards, there's some details that I can come up with. Cold Springs Steering Group. And Recovery College, Councillor Donald, are you in danger? Thank you, members. Yes, for those members that don't know, normally at tagouts on meetings, we give you a lunch, you provide an update. So when you tell those meetings, you put it up or somewhere, or what you need to, and I go on one. After a very brief point of thanks for what was discussed, and then the answer, and when you say that this council's going on occasion to endorse this project.
Before we, before we move on to item eleven, just quickly on the Cold Springs one. Cumbria Wildlife Trust, who are working on the Cold Springs project, are very keen to get public participation. And as we have a number of people from Carlton here, for saying, if, if any of you are interested, give me a shout, I can send you the details.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we can tell the citizens of the public?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. No, they're, they're, they're eager to get as many people as possible. So item eleven is committees. We're looking for volunteers from members for each of the committees. Finances for a four-year term. Communities for 12 months and planers for 12 months. So if we start with finance, what we're looking for is.
Six, yeah, six members to volunteer, at least six, six to volunteer.
And what we, and we see about.
I'll do it, thank you.
I mean, is that seven full members or seven, six members?
That's seven.
Good. Thank you.
No, it's up to six, actually. We didn't change the terms of reference. That has been discussed, so we'll put it at seven for now, we'll deal with the variants at your first committee meeting.
Okay. Okay, communities is a 12-month term. Show of hands, if you're interested in that.
I'll start, yeah. Well, I've got the terms of reference on the, on the desk, that'll give you an overview, one of the blue box. If you tip it over, it'll tell you where it was. Hands up, please, nice and. One, two, three, four, I've got six with chairs.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
And that leads to planning, which is for term 12 months.
Oh, it's answered, oh, that we like to see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
So, so item thirteen, we need to elect committee chairs for planning, finance, and communities.
No, we need subs.
Oh, sorry, yeah, sorry, item twelve, we need to have substitute members for the finance and communities.
So anybody out that hasn't put themselves forward for finance, that's in the, in a way, perhaps somebody's gone away or gone on holiday, it's all a bit short notice. Can you just pop in, just sit through the meeting, have this, make, make our decisions through law or way, and show them the court. Doesn't mean you have to be an expert, because you'll help them make the decision, make the process. You start with finance, please, Chair. There are two, I think, trees.
Anybody else for that?
Thank you.
Communities.
Yeah, and, oh, I've got, I'll put you both down, which, you just don't know what happens to people for planning. Any subs for planning? Thank you.
Right, so we need to have chairs, so starting with finance, do we have any nominees for Chair?
Just, just a reminder, that's Scott Jackson, sorry, Councillor Jackson, Councillor Shepherd, Councillor Jason, Councillor Rudden, Councillor Lawson, Councillor, Councillor Kenyon, and Councillor Burghain.
I'd like to nominate myself. I'll nominate councillor Jen. Yeah, I'll nominate you as well. I second you, so.
Anybody else fancy to find that chair? And then councillor Kenyon.
You've got a vote, so.
Outside with councillor Kenyon, so we have.
We'll do it. Are there any others before we go to a vote? This is for finance, so Chair of Finance, okay, we'll do it alphabetically, all those in favour of councillor Kenyon? Please put your hands up. Okay, and all those in favour of councillor Shepherd? Okay, councillor Shepherd's on that one, sorry, Ron. Right, so the next, the next one is communities. Who we have on the list, please, is.
Councillor Donald, councillor Jackson, Snell, Owen, Kenyon, and Jason.
I'm, oh, councillor Snell.
All those in favour of councillor Snell? Oh, and it's. No, no nominations, all those in favour of councillor Snell?
Thank you.
Thank you, and lastly, planning. I would like to nominate councillor Jackson for planning.
I'll take the councillor Jackson.
Are there any other nominations?
Can I nominate myself?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Second this, yeah, second this, yeah.
Okay, so, so we have a vote, so we'll start with councillor Holden, all those in favour? Councillor Holden for Chair of Planning.
Yeah, you can write down.
All those in favour of councillor Jackson?
Thank you, members.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
Sorry, can I just point out, at the first committee meeting, we actually voted for deputy.
Correct.
Within the committee? Only the committee members that, that.
Yes, yes, but that's when we get the.
The next item is, uh, meetings. Um, I'd like to propose the dates of the meetings to the calendar year, uh, with the one, uh, provisor that the date for the January meeting is corrected to the twenty ninth, it is on my sheet, but it's not on yours, I think it says. Yeah, so it's the, it's the twenty fourth, that's the preset meeting. It's a four, sorry, the twenty ninth, you know. Are you all happy to accept those dates?
Chair, I may offer the information that committees can in their own roots change a time if necessary.
That'd be the first item, please.
So just a quick show of hands then, all those in favour of those dates and times?
Thank you.
Okay, item fifteen, you're asked to note that the review of policies, procedures and term of reference has been completed and that there are two policies for members' considerations, one of which is a motion from myself, which is to change, um, or an amendment to standing order E three, three E, to include requirements for the public to submit written questions and statements in advance of council meetings and a process for handling follow-up questions. Most members would allow council and officers time to consider and provide a measured response that may not be forthcoming if the question is a surprise and vocalised live during the meeting. Process encourages the question to think carefully about what they want to ask, and they'll receive a diligent response to a question of importance to them. That's the, that's the fancy wording, um, just briefly to explain what I'm looking for. I'm, I'm hopeful that if people have time to, uh, if the police councillors and officers have time to think about the questions and come up with an answer, it might be a slightly more sensible and more useful answer than if we're kind of dealing with it on the night without any prior warning. Um, and I, and I think similarly it works the other way around as well, because it allows the person asking the question time to sit down and think about what it is they want to ask, because they've got to submit it in advance, so that again, they're not kind of thinking heavily in the meeting. Um, I hope that makes sense. Um, could I have a second look at the change, thank you, councillor Shepherd? Um, and then we've got time to talk about it, if any of you's got anything, would you like to say any questions?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, is, are we not putting yet another word on that? People to actually ask questions, wouldn't that better? Approach to this be, if the question's a surprise, if you don't know what the answer is to say, we'll get back to the meeting. I'm just, I'm just trying to, so, help communication. Somebody to sit down and write something, so have a.
Yeah, I understand what you mean, but I think it actually makes us much more able to answer the questions appropriately, because there often is an occasion where you have to take it away and have a look at it, so it means the person, the member of the public, then has to wait for their answer or getting sent out. I mean, it doesn't have to be an in-depth, it just has to be a quick question about what they want answered, and then whether it be councillors or whether it be the officers, can actually come back, come to the meeting where they're raising it with all the issues followed covered.
Councillor Jackson?
Yes, um, I, um, see that there's certainly, there's a need for topicality in a question, it's a question that needs to be at that meeting. Uh, I do appreciate that, um, a response could be provided, provided later, but something do need to be done in that meeting, it does need to have a sense of, of time and, and be relevant to surrounding events and suchlike, so having it, um, there and then is often very useful. Uh, I, I, I think we do need to find it sort of watch your moments and things like that, but the sense that it has to be a requirement would, uh, by the wording, um, it sounds like it would stop any questions other than the ones that were, um, already submitted. So I would suggest, if I may offer an amendment, that the wording be changed to, um, it would be considered helpful, and it would be a request of the council that if public ask questions, then it would, uh, submit them prior.
Just give me a minute, a minute to look at the motion before we first, we've got proposed amendment, we've got proposed amendment now, members. Just to see where that could fit, just give me a second. Okay, members, if you come up at page forty-three, and if you, if you should propose an amendment, councillor Jackson did particularly have a look, at forty-three, page E two, I suggest your wording would fit in there, your proposed amendment. Have a read, I'll give you an extra look at it, see if you're content.
Okay, forty-three.
E two.
E two, oh yes, thank you. So we get a change of wording, so it's safe and preferable to have the current question in item other than, it must be an option. Do we have a second?
I was just making sure it's word, it's okay, it's worded right, but. Time to put it on spotlight. It's one, it's one as well, one, there's a sentence in one. Yeah, so it's one and two, to insert preferable. It is preferable that a member of the public may make a request in writing to the town clerk prior to the meeting.
A question should be asked with appropriate notice, having been deliberately left there.
Yeah, um, so, members, I'm just going to read this out, E one, members of the public may make representations, ask questions and give evidence to a meeting which they are entitled to attend irrespective of the business on the agenda, it is preferable that a member of the public make a, a request in writing to the town clerk prior to the meeting. Are you happy with that, Councillor Jackson?
And maybe it's had to facilitate, um, a stronger, more comprehensive response being available.
To facilitate a full response?
Yes.
To the questioner. Okay, and then E two?
Yeah. I think a question should only be asked.
A question should. Passing out May, should.
Adding more emphasis on practicable.
Actually, I think, I think asked, there just has been given the right to do the command.
I don't want to say strongly practicable, I do want to say should.
Okay. Do you want me to read out again, members, what the amendment is before you decide to, if you're going to second it? Is that the intent?
I'm going to add in that questions asked on the night may not get an answer.
Anyway, um, yes, a question. Questions submitted on the night, um, may not, uh, it may not be suitable for questions submitted on the night to receive a full answer, in such cases, you've been responsible and provided for due parts after the meeting.
Yes.
It's more likely possible.
Yes, yes.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
I thought we got that in this one.
Maybe they're already, though.
We've seen, I, I've seen that somewhere already.
X one.
Yes, X, uh, any question which cannot be dealt with during the bit?
Yeah. Okay, thanks, all right, I should have read it to the proper.
Okay, right, I'm going to read it back to you, E one, members of the public may make representations, ask questions and give evidence to a meeting which they are entitled to attend irrespective of the business on the agenda, it is preferable that a member of the public make a request in writing to the town clerk prior to the meeting to facilitate a full response to the questioner. Questioner, a question should, and if it asks, if notice has been given. Content?
Yes.
Right. Okay, so we're now debating that, members, that is the substantive motion.
Any comments?
Any comments?
Yes, um, will be time, time.
They've got it, it's within there already. You've fallen down the day of the meeting.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, yes.
We're not totally into it. We've got Councillor Donald's.
I'm not sure if this really references the first motion, although it's still relevant to this. That somehow, despite the advantage of having the question in advance, I think there's something lost in terms of the feeling of democracy potentially from the public. Last one, my first thoughts were, and it's starting to feel a little bit complicated, um, that in a time when we're all possibly more suspicious about how the votes were in behind the scenes, if you're told not to be able to do something that seems to be an longstanding, um, ability, um, seems, I, I was my gut instinct at the start, and now I'm, uh, fully agree, even despite the amendments, the substantive, I think, so, um.
Just, just to offer, just to offer a flip side, the thought that occurs to me is that if, um, if every question is asked at the time, and we spend a lot of time saying to people, your answer will come later, those answers are going to come from the officers, and they're not going to come from the discussion amongst the members, which could devalue the answer theoretically, although the office.
We don't allow any of the business, that, we wanted that out on Saturday morning, and to my mind, having a question arrived unseen, as it were, is a form of any other business.
Councillor Stone? Sorry, councillor Holden, you need to turn your things around, I keep juggling your hands up.
I seem to remember the councillor Scotland, just so, councillor Jackson was saying that if a question was asked at the meeting, you didn't go in prior to that, that the provisor would be, they would not probably be able to have a full explanation, a full, um, answer, and it would be filed in writing, have we got that anywhere?
Any questions, X, X twelve?
It's where.
Item seventeen, the next.
Yes, but this is all suggesting this question has come in earlier and not actually at the meeting.
That's all questions. Any questions?
Which cannot be dealt with, but the, we're all right, so we're saying this should and should try and it's preferable, so therefore, reading between the lines, you could ask the question at the meeting without further what about apples warning?
Are you interested to answer that?
Yes. Chair, you can move it. I will not give that.
Members, can I just talk through the chair, please?
So we need a second, do we need a second?
We've said, we've said, we've said, yeah.
Has anybody else got anything to say that? So all those in favour of the amendment, we should.
Yeah.
So all those in favour of the motion, now it's become a motion. Sorry. Right, where are we at?
Homeworking policy, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so the homeworking policy, members are asked to consider the homeworking policy, which is new and supports the council's flexible working policy. I'd like to propose a policy, do I have a second?
I'm happy to answer any questions, Mr. Chair. And any questions?
Any question? Councillor Holden?
Yeah, I just, on the clarification, it says, um, on page sixty-six, um, as agreed with council, any, anything about this flexible working, as agreed with council, is that officers of the council, it's not members of the council?
It's just officers in the council who have applied formally for flexible working at home.
To, to yourself?
To myself, yes, and I, for example, I've approved it, and it might be that, for example, they only have access to a vehicle two days a week, or it might be that they're studying for a degree or something of that nature, that means that working from home would be beneficial for them and for the organisation, and thus it's a routine change to their work pattern. We do work, as you know, at home from home, but this is a routine change, which would mean we'd have to change their contract. And prior to permitting anybody to work from home, we need to make sure that they have systems in place at home to enable them to work, um, safely and without being disturbed, and also from our perspective, we need to make sure that there's an agreement in place.
Right, I'm just going to clarify the question of who, who, what, um, obviously, it's.
If it were, if, if, if I apply for it, council would approve me, if any of my colleague officers lie for it, I'm.
You won't, thank you, right.
Any other questions or comments?
I've just had one, so, I mean, IT security, that's already in place.
So it's just a vote, shall handle those in favour? Uh, item sixteen is membership to national organisations. Members are asked to note that we are, uh, continuing subscriptions, uh, for, oh, sorry, we have another continuing subscriptions, and the council has also received twelve months' free membership with the Rural Services Network and Rural Market Town Group. You're asked to accept the recommendation to renew membership for the Rural Market Town Group for the term of the council at the subscription rate of £21,082p for twenty-three, twenty-four, noting that this will change for each membership year. Um, I'd like to propose a subscription, sign a second one. Thank you, councillor Jackson. Did you have a question, councillor?
I did indeed, yeah, um, looking at, uh, sixteen B, it does suggest that the Rural Services Network and the Rural Market Town Group are different organisations.
So Rural Services Network is the parent body, and the rest, the town market group is a subgroup of it, so they are the council body, so they have lots and lots of different bodies, including these rural sources, but they are the main organisation. So you, I'm a member, I'm an officer of the town, rural town. Market group, and you are a member. And at some, occasionally we do meet, uh, meetings, but mostly it's officers in council part, but they are the organising body, yes, it will be very.
Is it only the Rural Services Network that's free?
No, none of it's free.
It would only free for one year, it's good for it.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, that's all right.
So it's all four within £121p to two members?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, just, uh, speaking as a second to the motion, I'd like to say that, um, I think the town council, uh, an organisation of this size has a responsibility in such groups, bringing expertise and different points of view, and that, um, with it being rural market towns, a lot of them don't quite have the same level of expertise available to them. I think anything that we can do to help that group, um, have a role, reliable and, um, dynamic and.
I think from my perspective, their search onto fair, into fair funding, rural versus urban, has been astonishing, um, and it clearly identifies the disparity between rural and town centres, and we have a good, really, our heart in mind.
And so to conclude my point, that we're probably going to get far more back out of this sort of relationship than we have.
Actually, indeed, indeed.
Any other questions or comments? So, we need a vote, okay, all those in favour of subscriptions? Item seventeen, matters from the Finance Committee. Uh, first item, item A is Joint Panel on Government Accountability, Accountability Practitioners Guide from March twenty-twenty-three. Members are asked to ratify the adoption of Joint Panel on Government Accountability Practitioners. Members are asked to ratify the adoption of Joint Panel on Governance and Accountability Practitioners Guide, March twenty-twenty-three. We're not going to ask you all to say the name of the thing that you're voting for. It's quite a matter. I'd like to propose the adoption of the guide, do we have a second there, please? All those in favour? Uh, item B, Fixed Asset Register, Thursday, first of March, twenty-twenty-three. Members, uh, asked to note that, um, you are asked to ratify the fixed asset register and the reconciliation of transactions. I'd like to propose the approval of the asset register on the day first of March and the reconciliation of transactions twenty-two, twenty-three. Are you seconding?
No, I'd like to say something, please.
Okay, well, do I have a second there? Yes, thank you. Uh, okay, House of Holden?
Thank you. Um, just to ask, let me just find the right page. Two comments for. Just a request, please, that every time you read, refer to Thakabet, we call it Thakabet Field, because there are two other bits of land called Thakabet, uh, in the town, and it leads to confusion. So, uh, it sounds as if we're talking about the Beck itself, if it's just says Thakabet, we're not. So we've got that in front, please. Page one, four, position. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, guys? Right, all those in favour of the registered being approved, I suppose? Uh, item C, Financial Outturn Report, year ending third, first of March, twenty-twenty-three. Members are asked to ratify the final outturn reports for the financial year ending third, first of March, twenty-twenty-three. I'd like to propose this, do I have a second there? Thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favour? Thank you. Uh, item D is the internal audit. Members are asked to ratify the internal audit final report. I'd like to propose, uh, that we ratify this report, do I have a second there? Thank you, House of Jackson. Any questions or comments about the internal report?
Just a, uh, a conventional thing, thank the officers again for their hard work that goes into getting these audits.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favour? Thank you. Uh, item E, Effectiveness of Internal Audit Provision for twenty-two, twenty-three, and reappearance of the internal auditor. Members are asked to ratify the review of effectiveness of internal audit provision. Uh, I'd like to propose that we do that. Do I have a second there? Thank you, House of Donald. Any questions or comments about the reappearance of the internal auditor?
Is there any reason to stop, uh, Chair?
Is there any effect, is it internal control first? And it's internal.
Oh, right, sorry, yeah, sorry, yeah. So, yeah, sorry, effectiveness of internal audit provision is what we'll ratify first, so any questions or other?
What's your question, I'll explain.
Okay, so, uh, all those in favour of ratifying the, the review? Thank you. Uh, right, so the second one is to ratify the reappearance of G area as the internal auditor for twenty-three, twenty-four. I'd like to propose the reappearance of G area, do I have a second there? Thank you, House of Jackson. Any comments on this one? House of Jackson?
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, is, is this, has, has anyone been voting?
Um, our internal auditor is, is picked because of the experience of town clerk, RFO and trainer, Association of the Park, which is also not a large member of the council's achieving for this. It's quite difficult to go to an ordinary character, ordinary auditor that has a specific sector experience. At some point in time, I do expect, uh, it's a very tired, uh, which might be a bit of a problem for a lot of councils in country. But part of the, the review of the internal, um, controls is obviously why that she's probably experienced, uh, from a cost perspective, her way to go.
Because for the internal audit, probably the year of the council, I, I can't forget that.
Any other questions or comments on that one? So we're voting to ratify the reappearance of G areas, the internal auditor, if that's in favour. And finally, on the side of the annual governance and accountability return. Annual governance statements, twenty-two, twenty-three, section one of the annual governance and accountability return. Town council must conduct an annual review of the effectiveness of the system of internal control prior to the completion of the annual governance statement. And a form review was carried out by the Finance Committee on the twenty-third of March, twenty-twenty-three, which was duly ratified by the council on the twenty-seventh of March, twenty-twenty-three. The review confirmed the council's system of internal orders were effective, and the review of effectiveness of internal audit provides further support for that assessment. So, members are asked to approve the annual governance statement for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. I'd like to propose that we approve that.
Do you want to pay this?
Right, second there, thank you, House of Shepherd. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favour? Thank you.
Can you sign this, Mr. Chair, before you run? Can you sign that? So.
Members are asked to authorize the chair of the council and the term that to sign this paper.
Good to hear.
We're too interested in that.
So efficient.
All right, for the moment. Hope we don't talk for a minute. Sorry, thank you. All right, then, section two, accounting statements, uh, annual governance and accountability return, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. Members are asked to approve the accounting statements. Uh, I'd like to propose that we approve the accounting statements, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a second there, thank you, Judge.
Yes, please, any comments?
Any comments or questions?
The new chair's signing in.
Eighteen.
I can pay this.
Oh, apologies. Yeah, I've got that one and that one.
Okay, so number three is notice of public rights and publication of unaudited annual governance and accountability return. Members are asked to note that the notice for the unaudited ABR, that's still a period of numbers and accountability return, would be published on the council website and noted for from Sunday, the fourth of June, twenty-twenty-three, to Friday, the fourteenth of July, twenty-twenty-three. Has everybody noted that?
Noted, yeah.
Payments for approval, members are asked to identify. So that's probably two. Two members for the new Finance Committee to undertake the payments for approval reconciliation for the meeting of the Finance Committee on the twenty-sixth of June. So I'm asking for volunteers from the new committee, back you, House of Holden? Thank you.
April May.
And this chair, are we proposing to do the same since it's always been done one person? There's two, not one to one, and sort of.
Well, just at your first meeting.
Uh, right, okay, that moves us on to, uh, item eighteen, which is the Carlton Village Hall. Members are asked to consider the report and recommendations contained within. I'd like to propose the report, do I have a second there? House of Jackson, before. Any questions or comments about the report?
Kind of a case, what we're looking to do is to do a business case, not the same real case.
Agreed, it's, we're expressing an interest. So it starts the conversation, um, business case, and it may vary draft on, in the time that we've got. And as we see within the recommendations, so it's a quality of question for the builders, because they happen to know that this has been offered to us. It might have been lost in the process of, uh, devolution. So in more fairness, we need to make sure that they're aware of that. And, uh, at the moment, it's just opening the discussion.
This, if I'm not, I'm just understanding, is it a law, one oh six, if we, with, it's with council, who had the right to buy first, so presumably WWF have the right to buy?
It's not a buy, it's a transfer.
Because I was, had, council to handle.
Yeah. Oh, put it, put it, that's it.
Okay, fine, sorry, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions, House of Jackson?
Just comment, um, I think, um, I'm going to say that, um, I bang on about devolution a little bit off, because I think that's the appropriate way to categorise it. And, uh, it's very important, to my mind, that the town council provides spaces in the town for satellite services, for community groups, for all manner of activity conducted by residents and, uh, organisations. And I think this is a step in my direction, the town council having a, uh, strong presence in the town and in the wider suburban area of the town. And, uh, then have the opportunity to go out to people rather than them coming to us. And I'm very excited about the prospect.
House of Holden?
Uh, House of Chair, um, it's possibly a bit too early in the process to be asking, but, um, not altogether sure about the ongoing management, if the scheme goes ahead in, in the way that the council will be represented once the whole project's gone ahead. Um, I don't know if that's, I know it's, uh, two point eight, it's, uh, mentioned there about owning and managing building, owning and managing and supporting a group of residents. I don't know, it would be a similar case to the allotment society, or it would.
It would very much depend on the business case, I would argue, and it would also very much depend on our success in establishing it. Having worked, um, managed resources for the town, parish councillors, where I live as a volunteer, you want to take on something that's established, resourced, um, and is willing to speak for it. You would be a player to any volunteers to get involved if they want. E- equally, you've got limited resources as a town council as well, so that will be all put into the options and risk analysis of, 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 in the business case. But it's expected to say that a lot of village halls are either run by parishes or run by volunteers, or a combination of them, both. Often when you see village halls that are big and by, uh, volunteer groups, they have been done, as I say, for decades and decades and decades. Um, and they always struggle to get volunteers, they always struggle to get the inclusive members. So a bit like, uh, a lot of association, you do, uh, you, you would have a very, a collaborative relationship and you match with your friends of the village hall that would take the time, so that they're always able to step in. But as you rightly say, we're a long way from deciding how it will operate. There's a lot for the kids to do right before we will get to that.
House of Holden?
Yeah, um, two point six, and then going on to item six about climate change. It says that if, as I suspect, as it stands, cannot include climate change negotiation. Officers of council have authority to negotiate changes, the draw is to consider enhancements after completion. Is that after it's built?
We don't, we don't even know.
You don't know?
We don't know if that's a definitive design that we've been given. We don't know if there's any scope for negotiation on improving the design prior to it's built. But my experience as with, with developers is, is that they will have limited resources themselves. So it will be part of the negotiation process.
So the, on page one, three, section one, six, council seek to build a hall with the environment sustainability as a priority. So, it's a chicken and egg game, I mean, first of all, if you've got their idea, how it's going to be built. Town council or anybody else has got their ideas, how we're going to have a sort of suitable climate change, environmentally friendly building built, and do they do too much together?
You can get as far as you can with the negotiation process and then with the expertise that we've got around the table on negotiation, you know, I think we'll probably have a strong case. But if we were able to get all of the climate change mitigation that we wanted to, but it was still important to finish the town hall, that would be up to council to decide if we can see. And we can always retrofit, and there are lots of grants available for village halls.
Yeah, and it's just retrofitting is obviously more expensive.
Indeed, but there's grants, there's grants available for village halls to be able to do that. But, you know, our preference, as with, with any developer, would be to do it before the build starts.
Well, I just, I really like the idea of, of, of subtle services, it's really good. Um, I just wondered, is there like a known feeling on the ground from the residents?
Certainly, those that I've spoken to, those that I've spoken to, um, also very excited about it. Sort of, a lot of checks on the internal.
Yeah, I've had.
House of Stowe? Hello, House of Holden?
Yes, I do want to speak.
Losing track, sorry.
Yeah, I'm.
Go on, you go first then.
Um, yeah, I, I think it is a very exciting thing. I just wanted to make sure that the people who have developed these plans, I take it that they have to go jump through the hoops of all the national agreements around, um, accessibility, but also the limited, the, the minimum size, the kitchens and all that sort of thing. They have done that, it helps them. Right, okay.
House of Holden?
Uh, I was going to say the same as Council herself, then looking at the plans, it does not look as if all the roofs are accessible, there's an accessible laboratory, but changing roofs don't look accessible, or kitchens, or the office, and anxious that there's a threshold. It, it looks a bit, um.
I, I can assure officers, yeah, I can assure you that officers have identified those similarities and many more besides, and we would, um, discuss that with the developers.
Yeah, just, uh, I thought, I'm not sure whether, um, this is, uh, a discussion of that. But, um, would council consider doing something like, if we could get a solar panel installation company to install solar panels for it, and they can back up inside, outside, and install it? Blah, 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 blah.
Absolutely.
Is it?
It's obvious, yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're open to that.
I believe we could be able to.
Any other questions?
I've just got another point. I, um, having been responsible for actually, um, managing the new community centre built, um, I think it's vital that we do involve local people right from the start and get them to, I, I don't know what work has already been happened, that has happened.
One of the reasons the audience would probably just think this well is that we're already in discussions with, uh, someone like the rest of the team, who offered to help the town's village group. So those conversations are already started, and I, I agree with you, it's their hall, they need to have some involvement.
And, and need to be clear about what, what their batteries are.
Indeed.
In terms of financial and the roles that people can take within it. And we've got the expertise to be able to support that.
It's essential that they are.
Yeah, it is, it's, we mentioned before, those teams are nearby. And that is a sort of base, good value, what, what, what is, is the rest of the first, they're all together.
And that's certainly a space for some shared project work.
So I'm proposing, um, I'll read the recommendations out.
I did want it.
Yeah. Uh, council formally expresses an interest, uh, subject to contract and agreement of terms without prejudice in accepting the ownership of the hall. Uh, that the services and contract manager, town clerk and solicitor have delegated authority to negotiate with permission on the proposed terms of any purchase and westman and furthest council on its position in relation to the acquisition of village hall, lack of factors. If the council agree the terms and approve the business case when completed, that the essential terms on cost and principles agreed provide authority to the town clerk to complete the charter and the terms of course, which is case are favorable. That expenditure to support the acquisition will be funded by reserves to the value of £25,000, and that council approve the establishment of a budget for a Carlton village hall that will sit with finance committee. The officers have authority to negotiate changes in the parts of the design of climate change mitigation. A task of village group be established to assist the successful transfer at the hall and engage with residents and develop business case. The membership will include the council chair, the vice chair, Carlton Ward members, there's an overlap there, councillors holder and myself, uh, and officers. And that the services and contracts manager and community services officer develop a business case with options around assisting her forward to the next schedule of meeting. Do I have a second there? House of Jackson?
One point of flagging, Mr. Chair, so it's right when it's voted on, is that, um... One point of flagging, Mr. Chair, so it's right when it's voted on, is that, um, the autocorrect error should be considered on the information.
Probably. Yes, it will.
I still second.
I'm just, um, can I make my review of the, of the, of the comments about this? Chair, I appreciate.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, that's. Yeah. That was a.
Yeah, I'd just like to declare the interest that my son has just changed the property as a house, um, so I would be glad to.
With that in mind, I think we've had our discussion, so all those in favour?
Oh, sorry, sorry, jump on, sorry, call this.
So item nineteen, asset of community value. Members are asked to consider the letter dated the twenty fifth of April twenty twenty three from Westmoreland and Furness councils, Assistant Director of Legal and Democratic Services, Councilor, I'm really not talking about the top view. Uh, we've had a letter from the Furness councils, Assistant Director of Legal and Democratic Services, seeking the council's opinion for the registration of the agricultural hotel as an asset of community value. I'd like to propose the matter, do I have a second one? Thank you, Councilor Shepherd. Does anybody have any comments to make about the agricultural hotel? Or its registration as a community asset?
An iconic part of the town, it's a link back to the time when the market used to be the town, there's a distinct history, it has a lot of history. I think probably a lot of town farmers can tell you a lot of stories about it.
Councilor Snell?
I've got a question, but, um, for me, it sounds like a really good idea, because we don't want to lose yet another, um, asset, particularly one that a lot of people use. And taking on board what you said, the least and marketing, still got everything inside. Um, this, having it as an asset of community value, where I enable local people to actually, um, look at running it, is that correct?
I believe so, it becomes on the open market, yeah.
Yes, so it would keep that particular pub in town, but it would also enable local people to be involved in the running of it and decision making of it if it becomes.
It'd be up to the people that pitch for the, um, purchase, I mean, how would people?
But if it becomes a community asset, there is more likely for people being able to do that, rather than go.
I was led to say, but I can't say for sure.
I think it gives the six months.
Who does?
Um, space before anyone.
It gives you six months to fundraise for the purchase. It gives you time to breathe and get the money for how any group who bought it now after wants to run it, as a library or a pub or, you know, a historic monument, it's entirely up to them.
Yes, so supporting its registration doesn't give us any liability at the moment, other than possibly people might ask to come for a funding at a late date, because that's a separate matter. This is more about making a statement that we're residents and we'd like to help protect, it would be very important to.
That's fourth nomination, um, I, I need some merit for it also, I think it could set an emotion, although evidence in the town, there might also have to be the same thing, and once we've done it, it could, you know, it could, it could, it could.
Any other questions or comments?
So, Mark, it's the board, ask that.
Just as, um, just before that, I mentioned it on Saturday, I haven't actually mentioned it this evening, I am a member of the camera.
I did have to stop you.
And it's, um, now it's, um, I'm, I'm doing a bit of clarity, it's just, it's not true, it's.
Anybody else a member of the camera?
No, well, no, um, so, just, is that the community group that want to have this as an asset, a community asset, camera, Solway?
No.
Solway branch? So, but it says, it does enable up to all communities, I'm a bit confused as to what the community is that wants this as an asset. Sorry, I'm looking at page one four three, there's quite a few blanked out bits, but camera Solway branch is there.
Yeah. It has a Solway branch.
I'm just not clear, I've not come across the issue, I said it earlier.
No, it disappeared to be camera, it disappeared to be the Solway branch that's applied for it, so it might have disappeared.
They've applied for it to be a community asset.
It appears to be the case of this, it's so much of it is redacted, but I believe that's the case, yeah.
Okay.
Chair, surely we, the council compares with the community asset if some group comes along and says, or asks it to get it, if some group comes along and wants to buy it and use it as an asset, that's not, that's unexpected.
Westmoreland Furness council have been approached by camera Solway branch to declare it an asset of community value. So then if the owners of the property wish to sell it on the open market, as you said earlier, the community have a right to bid for it for six months. If, if no bids are accepted in that six months, it goes into the open market like the other property.
How good, how good the camera could bid for it?
I believe so, yes.
I love the point of time, yeah.
See, the letter was, the letter was simply our opinion, so basically it was asking for an overall opinion, which I guess would be whether we support it or not. So.
I, I, I'm supporting it in third thing, I'm not supporting camera bidding over particular.
Well, it's just that's voting it as an asset, being nominated as an asset of community value.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what I'm trying to clarify, yeah.
So with that clarification, are members happy to vote in our way that we support it? All those in favour?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, and that brings us to item twenty, which is the planning application, that is next, I have a ready one to start. Members are asked to consider planning applications number twenty three slash oh two one eight and planning application twenty three oh two five oh.
Mr. Chair, would you want to tie this, we may, anybody who is not participating in the discussion, just push your chair back to the table. And Councilor Thompson is going to speak as a member of the public for its second debate.
Application of omega proteins described itself as highly specialized industrial complex on what I would request of everything. It fails to see its backdrop in relation to national park, continued development of previous agricultural lands, and was a, a debacle and smelly pursuit of residential castle town. Over recent months here, with an increase in volume in this in and out of the Amira Plan, the company wins new rent from this lot. More contracts, new more animal based products from slaughter houses in agriculture across the UK, and including Ireland, being transported by public boat to this penne site. Within the past two weeks here, have been three reported office fillers on Ozwater Road further west, which we want to host Grace Oak Road and the mega. Anobai products are required by law, and the mega's transport is to be carried in leak proof containers, which means there's nothing happening. The container's weak, and the liquid just smelled as well, creating other hazards. This application is merely to allow mega, omega to create a one way system through his own site to allow more lorries to make life easier for them with no benefit to people creating, there are no jobs. There is concern about wagons coming out of the site empty and declined in this border, etcetera. There is no evidence where wagons are cleaned as they have said before. Let the me go correctly, if I have a problem. The lorries not all garage and shared, again, as the company's previous said, again, let the me go correctly. I believe this application is merely about allowing more lorries in and out of the site, media and already overconversed public highway system, junction forty and Ozwater Road. The public road infrastructure is not in place for more than you can find, neither wagons, the spillages of that here.
I just made that clear, that Councilor Thompson has said that, um, as a member of the public and has definitely not commented or voted on that. Thank you, Councilor Thompson.
So members need to look at the omega application, which I point you, because they need to report before we have the planning application. Then you've got to assess them on local plan policies and the national plan policy framework, and you've got to look at the issues that are in front of you. The even over plan courses that apply are R S one for new development, um, the majority of which is within the main town penne, which is true. Development plan, or DEV one, um, local plan policy states that should be positive approach of presumption in favour of sustainable new development and working back on time solutions that mean applications can be approved wherever possible, e.g. by condition. But permission will be grant, and permission will granted unless material considerations indicate otherwise, or whether any adverse impacts of granting permission would significantly and demonstrably outweigh the benefits when assessed against the national plan policy framework. E M V one is about redevelopment, says that new development will be required to avoid any net loss that play of diversity and geodiversity. The site that they put in the, uh, this planning application for is already hard standing, um, behind a shed, however, it may need to comply with new neutrality, nutrient neutrality regulation. That's something that the principal authority, the local planning authority, will consider. E M V five, so it state is about environmentally sustainable design, proposals for commercial development should demonstrate that they've considered a number of sustainable issues to part of development. E M V six is about renewable energy, stating renewable energy schemes will be supported where the need criteria set out. E M V seven is about air pollution, all major developments will be required to assess the likely impacts on air quality. Those local plan policies will apply to both of these applications that you're going to come to today. Planning application twenty three oh two one eight is for the formation of a roadway. There's already a roadway there to provide a whole route for traffic working on development. It was approved under planning application sixteen oh three five seven. This is to allow the continuation of that, but to change it so that the lorries and wagons, H G Vs, will come into the site in one direction to access the trailer park, which is outside, and the washing areas, and then exit the site via that roadway. It's permeable, it's formed of crushed stone aggregates as normal on these sorts of sites. Small hall roadway was created as part of ongoing work, works, um, and the application states that it enables a one way system to improve safety on the site. The requirement through the planning condition for H G Vs to travel to and from the east on Grace Oak Road, which they do, and traffic movements are shown within the documentation that you have access through that link. Highways, the highways authority and the environment agency are both consultations and will respond separately on issues that affect them.
Are you going to ask questions?
Um, I'm, I'm in discussion, please, it's, it's okay.
So you're looking, you're only looking at the first.
Oh, okay. I want them, this, you say it's perme, it's a perme, it's a perme, it's a permeability of road, it's not the, not the concrete road, but so.
No, it's, so that's already there, a lot of the track is already there, and it's already, it's a permeable path formed of crushed stone aggregate.
No, I, I knew the whole, the, the, the one there at the moment, but I didn't see anything of there, but said, don't know what it was saying, that was a mistake.
Yeah, that's it, that's really.
I, I assumed, if you're wrong, there would be a concrete over that, whole road, to make it a home road. That, that, my comments. Um, I, I feel that this is purely about highways and environmental policy, the two people that are going to be about it, I don't think we can help with it, or what to say unfortunately about traffic.
Councilor.
Um, echoing what Councilor Shepherd said, in such circumstances, we can return with a response of no response, and we don't appear ourselves competent to respond on highways and environmental matters, but I would propose that we respond as no response.
Councilor.
Do we, do we know if there's been a response from highways or the hazard, has there been a safe for that, so there's no doubt?
No, there's another, in fact, it's another week or so for consultation, right, to run, so they may send a response after we've seen it today. But we have to send a response.
Sorry.
As the government in the framework of this, which is protecting on this one, and that I'm kind of, we're trying to look at it from all sides, the, the washing area is more accessible, but that's a more difficult, I don't think I should keep, but I also like to, like, Councilor, um, Jackson's comment about, I think a response should be, so it's a good one.
Councilor.
Yeah, I, I disagree that, that, uh, many responses that the council have to require in the various, is, is, I think that's the problem, but I think we should advise the private authorities, the Anna Williams, the, that have, that would like to deliver two issues, one is traffic, and the second issue is the process of travel, yes, which is, is right. So, guys, we need to have a good list of things, these, this is important, actually. I'm sure we have input to vote in the sports agencies.
Can you just put our response to just one of those council, those terms?
Oh, okay, then that's the, great.
That would be, that would be there.
Any other comments?
Members happy, thanks, I'm going to read it back. Um, that we send back a response, um, saying that we didn't have, that we have no comments on the overall thing, but we advise that the Glastonbury Furness, um, ensure that the environment agency and highways look at drainage, pollutants and increased traffic density as brought to our attention.
I think that's the, that's the.
Oh, I don't think he said it, he doesn't know.
Stocks just indicated he's happy for that to be included there.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Councilor Thompson, you've made a statement as a member of the public.
Right, that first one was just a warmer pack. This application is to allow omega proteins to build an aerobic digestive system, thereafter referred to as an A D plant at its penne site. This is on land back dropped by the Lake District, dashed apart, which is in the proximity of residential penne west Castle Town. The omega protein site is a registered industrial scale category three animal rendering plant, a waste burning oxidizer, which is not yet operational, and now an A D plant to produce biogas to feed into the national grid. It's got three separate functions, three separate permits, three separate different operations all together on this one small congested site. That's three major industrial plants, all carrying out different operations, all require different environmental devices and permits on an overcrowded site on the edge of the grid. A D plants are not a great panacea, but as environmentally friendly as they're made out to be. There is a strong. There is a strong case of AD plants not being built near residential areas. They include risk of toxic spills and odor emissions. Odor emissions are already a major issue in this area. And an AD plant will only add to potential risks. Meth, methane, hydrogen sulfide, and a range of other similar, similar smelling compounds all being released into the atmosphere. AD plants are proven to work best in fields far away from people. With applications for guyaging, fast gas, fast socket. Applications for biogas plants not normally granted near residential areas. Disappointingly, Eden District Council Planning Committee allowed this application to go forward without the need for an environmental impact assessment. That was a mistake. First, the Eden District Council was made on the line. Not allowing local residents consultation before Amiga was allowed to submit this AD-built application. You now have to decide if Penrith Town Council is going to approve the construction of two digester tanks. A processing and control building. A biogas storage tank, a biogas cleanup plant, a flare, and a new gas pipeline, propane tanks, heat exchangers, circulation tanks and pumps, all on the edge of the town. The core objection, however, is based on the fact this is a new industry for that site. It is a permitted animal rendering plant, it is a questionably permitted waste burning oxidizer plant. Now, Amiga wants to make it a biogas plant feeding into the national grid. Too much, too near, with too much risk and too few safeguards against pollution, toxic spills and other organisons.
Um, the information on the planning application was retreating afterward so that the biogas can be harvested to provide source of low carbon renewable, renewable energy to be used back on site or put into the national gas grid and it would replace and dissolve their flotation plan. Um, it's, the site is within the boundary of Amiga as a whole. You're, if those on planning will get this, this is the whole site. The, the site in question is here, it's already existing hard standing behind the sheds and behind the, uh, transport development at that end as well. Um, MPPF eighty one, um, policy is to help create conditions for businesses can invest, expand and adapt. One eight six of the national planning policy is that, um, development should sustain or contribute towards compliance with relevant limit values or national objectives for pollutants, taking into the present, taking into account presence of air quality management areas and clean air zones, and that they can be conditioned. Um, and S one five is about conserving and enhancing the natural environment. Although this is in the national park and it is in with an existing, um, an existing development, it's, it is highly visible from the Lake District National Park and World Heritage Site and along Penrith AMMV. Again, the Environment Agency and Environmental Health and highways will be asked to, um, give comments on this application and they will need permissions on the environmental policy, I think.
Questions for the next person?
Yeah, um, I'm probably, uh, Councillor Thompson, who's on here, not top thing here. And I did look at the, the application prior to it. I have to say, it would have been useful to ask something on the screen, the law to look at it, look at it, decide on some response now. Is that what we're here for now, to respond to this planning application from the town council? Right, so the aerobic digestion facility, to me, it looks massive. I don't know, Councillor.
Councillor Thompson's not looking to debate.
Sorry?
Councillor Thompson can't contribute to debate.
Oh, right, sorry, I didn't appreciate that, I brought this to the council, but anyway. So, to me, it looks massive, I've seen these, um, digesters on farms and etcetera. And if they're going to be more visible than what's already visible from the national park and the aerobatic side of the national park, then there may be reservations about this. Um, but there is the material.
I didn't say it's going to be more visible. I said the site, I didn't say it's going to be more visible, because I don't know that. They haven't provided a photo mark to not charge of how it will look within the site, which would have been helpful. But it is a site that is visible.
Yeah.
From the Lake District National Park and from the AMMV.
So these aerobic digesters are going to be, I would suggest even more visible than what's there.
There's two digester tanks, which is seventeen metres high, an eight metre high control building in the centre of the site, and then a biogas storage tank with dome roof, which you'll, if you, if you travel to, from Penrith to Harbors, we're on a farm, right?
There's a lot of the ground, and then there's a dome on the top. Yeah, there is a bit of a demonstration here on this diagram, Councillor Thompson's lot. I wouldn't see that, it makes plenty of difference, sorry, but these are the sort of big digesters we're looking at, so.
Just, um, did you say seventeen metres high? Yes.
Sixteen.
Councillor Thompson? Well, I give credit where it's due for looking forward to new ideas. Although they're not really new ideas, I suppose. But, um, when I was looking further, like, the, um, the, the sustainable issues that, that are, um, part of, um, of future thinking. The climate change, I think, is potentially more serious than was projected on some of the funding in some of the reports. And in terms of footing or in terms of different, um, links, what, what is actually, actually potentially going to be? I was just quite concerned by, um, thinking that, um, although it seems very neat for the applications, um, there, there doesn't seem to be a lot of thought for, um, alternative developments or, um, it's very complicated, everything seems quite straightforward in all sense. But I, I think, um, I, I need to be a bit more reassured about whether things got wrong.
A number of things. First, I don't have a look at the application, the nice but an elevation of the plant showing the existing plant and the new development beside it, which might be ten leagues higher than it is. And second, there's a photo montage history in the business. None of them have the new plant actually drawn on, which is normal practice in photo montage presentation. The chance of a toxic liquid is that there is a bonded area around it, which will take on twenty-two places. The important, the tax rupture is a concrete wall around it, a so-called bonded area to protect any liquid getting out of it, by, to prevent the smell from that liquid getting out of it and stop the liquid coming into the, they would just standard practise on a, a drug on the plant, which is basically it. I have a question, biogas is basically a movie, and it's principle. I have a question about the flare vent. In the oil business, when we run a flare, we run the flame on twenty-four seven. Because if there's a pressure problem in the system, a gas goes flying up the chimney, you have to make sure it catches fire. And the only way, you don't do that by saying, oh, we're on heat, we'll turn on the igniter. So there's always a flare, a flame of burning, if you've seen one, or over there. They talk about a shielded flare. Does that mean the flame, this is not very small volume compared to the values, and it's very much lower pressure. So if that flare, if that flare, I would expect to be chilled in so that, where it wasn't going off, everyone's quite here. It wouldn't be visible, otherwise there's going to be a, a large flame over the liquid. Seriously will affect the visual impact of the plant. So, yeah.
Uh, point of information, I'm, I'm another councillor who has accused himself from the decision to speak as a member of the public.
We debate now, so I'm pleased you can't issue a challenge, sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, okay. So, at, at the moment, I mean, certainly in that respect, the Penrith pub, um, there is no references at all to increased levels of, of, uh, planning application. That's obviously massively been a concern. So I'd like to see that addressed. And I'd probably go one step further and say that you could bring the, this application to resolution of the current issues. Because I can't demonstrate, I can't manage the pub as it is, I don't give me much time to manage the pub additionally apart from. I also think from the application I read, there was no, um, assessment of the nurses and the nurses actually build, uh, health issues for older, um, young children. Et cetera, et cetera. Now, I don't know where the Environment Agency is reading this, starts, starts, I guess. But I think it was certainly a crossover into the other community, which has to be told to the county. Councillor Thompson? I didn't remember any more to bring, I think I could. But I did, there was an old, um, an old screening assessment, and he said it was free. Well, I didn't really believe it, there was no evidence there, especially given my higher levels of, um, connectivity. Um, free from odor levels likely to cause problems, he did say that, but I, I, I didn't feel. Well, I, I, it's, it's the same at the moment, if you, if you read the, uh, the, um, the pop, that's, that's, uh, although the, the current, um, system, which I put in the penne, right? Commission has meant to stop the system. So what brands this is, I think, probably to sit down with, um, whoever, whomever, trying to answer. On a holistic basis.
Yeah, there's only, there's only so far we can go with the comments, what we can, what we can suggest that, based on considerations that we're hearing around the table, is that you object, and explain your objection, or you can just say you object. Uh, I think Councillor Jackson is asking.
Yes, it's, it's just, what is a material planning consideration?
These are all material planning considerations, Councillor Jackson, which I please.
Smells and fumes.
Health.
Sales fumes, um, physical infrastructure, and, and how, impact on potential contaminant-related loud, uh, nature conservation and biodiversity, there, there's several that probably should be objected to, which is true. So what we, what I think about the laws needs is some wording for an objection. Members who are minded to object or, you know, members might want to support, so you need to propose on members' points, I think, for it.
Who's going to want to?
Okay, I don't, I don't, certainly need all the words, but I do need the reasons that you want to object on, so that I can put them.
Any, any of those material objections that, that fits it, I mean.
I think the flare needs to be brought in, I definitely, because if I'm, I don't think, the way it's worded, it doesn't look like there's going to be a flare, but my experience of running this type of process is you have the flare there the whole time.
We're going to have a show. So, just, just for clarity, um, can I ask if any members support the application? Show of hands.
I'm not against the whole idea of a biogas plant, but I'm against, I don't think they've given us anything to say that it's not going to be a two-sided, a non-present.
Right, but we're not, we're not talking about the idea, we're talking about the actual application. So it's, it's either, so, so is there anybody who supports it? I'm assuming not from the, like, hours. So is, is it safe to say then that we all object to it? Show of hands.
To tell us to believe.
So, in terms of wording of that response, are we happy to let Ross do that?
I'm, I'm, I did too, because I can't see a lot of oxygen.
Is that, so is that, you, you have insufficient information then to make an informed decision?
Yes, because I don't have a, see what it looks like, and there's no photo montage that shows the interesting plant with a new plant beside it.
We can do that and talk about layout and density, which is not, we talked about smells and fumes that led us to the Environment Agency and the Socks, is from there.
Councillor Jackson, the council director.
I just want to put, I would want to put that in emphasis on, and we don't have a recommendation, making a whole agreement, we are objecting. Because to object, we do have to have an objection.
I understand. I have insufficient, insufficient information to comment. All right.
I just wonder if, um, I wonder about, um, unexpected climate elements could cause problems.
It's not just one area. I don't think it's, it's not, two things in the same, it's not, I mean, do there?
I'm working on an expected part.
No, no, you don't know.
I'm just going to stick to the chat, thanks.
So, that area of the flood will be, because the long thing we are, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very, very non-flood area.
And, and previous applications that, that are, that are close to the waterway, have all received objection.
You need a clarification, I'll be, and I'll send on. No, you didn't show how to.
Okay, so that's, uh, that's the end of tonight's business. Um, item twenty-one of the agenda is just to note that the next meeting is on the seventeenth of July, at six PM. Thanks for all your time, your patience. See you for the next meeting.